Okay. Okay, alright. Are you ready on the break? I hereby call this meeting for the Rockingham County Public School Board for Monday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty to order. Our first order of business is to approve tonight's operating agenda. May I have a motion for approval, please?
I need to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillan. May I have a second, Ms. Lora?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lora. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we're putting old habits back, aye. Please pass your vote. Motion passed. Five aye, six. Would you please join with me to pledge allegiance to the flag? Thank you. Let us please join together in a moment of silence and contemplation. Thank you. Next on the agenda is comments from the public. We have a sign-up sheet that is at the entrance of the meeting at all of our meetings and for people to sign up. And no one has chosen to sign up this evening to speak live, but I think they want to. So let's turn and take some time to meet.
Yes, so as in past school board meetings, we offered a Google form to the public to submit comments. And we asked that they be kept to about three minutes when read out loud. So there's one comment received for tonight's meeting from RB Props. And the comment states, "This morning, Zoom experienced a massive service outage. I think it would be a good idea for the board to implement and distribute a plan for dealing with this type of situation in case it begins happening on a more frequent basis, given the number of school systems across the nation that are returning to school in a virtual-only environment. Would the start of the day be postponed until Zoom is back up? Would it be treated as a snow day with classes canceled? Does the current calendar have enough days built into it to handle multiple missed days due to down technology? I think this is an issue that needs to be addressed. Puts haste as I haven't heard or read any mention of how it could be handled." That's the only comment we received.
Would anyone here like to address the board this evening? Thank you. Highlights by board members. I'd like to start on my right with Dr. McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. On this evening, I have three shout-outs that I'd like to give. These are people who need to be recognized and decide where they should be recognized. And the first one is we have some teachers who have received some Economic Education Awards that are given annually by JMU. In fact, there are six recognitions. The overall person who received the award, the recognition, this year was Leise Pearson from Elton Middle School. Another person was Tammy May, Principal of Lacy Spring. She received the first in the elementary to grade three to five category. A first also was given to Barbara Eames and her colleagues at Turner Ashby High School in the Special Ed Department. A second place award was given to Tyler Oribah from the elementary third grade category. And he's from Plains Elementary, and he's the counselor. Another second is Julie Casetta from Spotswood High School. She teaches career and technical education. And the last of our six are Ryan Powell, who received third prize, I guess you could say, from Spotswood High School. And he teaches social studies. So that was my first recognition. The second goes out to Riffy, the Rockingham Educational Foundation in Core Graves, for their continued dedication and support to the students and the teachers of Rockingham County schools. We continue with fundraisers, but they're now conducting meetings to see how they could help us during this pandemic. And the third is to community members. I believe I mentioned this once before at a school board meeting, but I would like to thank all the community members throughout Rockingham County who have completed their census forms. We have until October the thirty-first, that's the deadline, in order for everyone, every household, to complete their census form. And I encourage you, strongly encourage you, to please do so. It affects so many avenues for our county, including the flow-through of federal funds through the state and to our county for our students. So I'm encour-- if you have already completed your census form, would you please encourage your friends and family who have not, because it's important to our community? Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you. Am I on? Am I on? Okay, yeah. I just, I do have a highlight that we had, that we were able to have the Rockingham County Fair last week. And I want to shout out to all the ag teachers and teachers in general that were able to help students prepare and exhibit items throughout the week. I also want to say a huge thank you to the Rockingham County Fair staff and volunteers for keeping us all safe, and Rebecca Holloway for making it happen. There were many, many announcements for people to be social distanced and wear masks. And I think that people did a relatively good job of following it. So just shout out to everyone and thanks to everyone who made that educational experience possible for our ears. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lora. Mr. Breeden. Thank you, sir. Ms. Breeden.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. A couple things I wanted to mention. First of all, our new teachers heard about a video. And so our school board put together messages for them. And we appreciate Miss Judd for staff for putting together what was extremely different, twenty-two different things. So they've picked around running along with all of our teachers. We know that there's been time, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. And we appreciate all of you being, many of them actually, during the summer, to start thinking about lesson plans and what this journey looks like. And we appreciate that, and we feel and we know that this is going to happen all year. The second thing is, we had our summer graduation, about two weeks ago or so. And we got some students to get ready for the summer. It's usually a much smaller ceremony than happens during the regular school year, but we're just as proud of those students who got their diplomas. And then thanks to our principals and assistant principals for working with those students. And we have a nice ceremony.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden. Dr. Schickel.
A first thank you to Dawn Woodrum, the new principal here at Rockingham Academy. I think this is the first time we've had three school board meetings in a row at one location. She thinks it's some initiation ritual, but it's not. It's just really good to be here and love the new skirt for the table up front. So thanks for all you do to host us and we're really lucky to have you here, for sure. Kevin Perkins, our technology director, still experimenting with different approaches every time so we can provide the best service when we stream these board meetings. A closed captioning tool that's automated early on provided some comic relief apparently for those viewing the meetings at home because of how off the translations were. But all of you who have used speech-to-text on your cell phone know how that works. And then also, a couple of groups really and people that have taken this opportunity to find opportunities among obstacles. So when we closed schools back in March, a lot of people, basically, their jobs are ground to a halt. And I could point to pretty much everyone in this room and say that for them, there hasn't been a day off since then. And so, for example, for Cheryl Mas, our Chief Financial Officer, her accounting work doesn't stop. But at the same time, she had to lead the development of a health and safety plan, right? For Doug Alder, for, you know, organizing graduations and then all the work with the county to have a Parks and Rec childcare program in addition to everything else he does. You know, Larry with the instructional plan, Michelle Judd, you know, developing all the policies, learning daily what the new regulations from the Department of Labor and Industry are. And so it's been constant. And everyone in this group, and again, I could go on, as I said last time, Becky with the mental health piece. It's always this approach of, this is the situation, how can we do the best with it? Is that a conversation just before I came here with Beth Harder, our finance supervisor? And it was just so fun to talk to her because she said, "You wouldn't believe what our teachers come up with in this situation," right? They're not looking at, "Oh, my goodness, this is going to be terrible." They're like, "Here's what we built, and how can we make this the best it can ever be?" And Riffy, you know, Dr. McQuillan had already said that, the foundation, same thing. Here's what it is, but how can we get the best out of that? And what can we learn possibly for the future? And so I would also say, you know, at the county level, Stephen King, Trish Davidson, they worked with us in providing money that in other localities is not given to the school division. And the locality gets CARES Act money. And they called us and said, "Hey, the locality is also getting money. We want to know what your needs are." And we've talked about this so many times, the relationships we've built over the years that these are the situations. And when that comes to fruition, and again, I'll always point back to Mr. Breeden's presentation at the School Boards Association, when he talked about the relationships with the county governing body. And everyone said, "Yeah, that's not how that works, because it doesn't work that way," right? So Jeremy Holloway, Fire Chief, and I just talked to him a little bit earlier. Here's information I have for you, here's what you can do with that. We have some useful information, how do we make this work? And so that's really that light that appears all the time when people say, "This is a crisis, but we're going to find all the opportunities and we're going to be creative." And so I want to thank all of them and also point that out, right? And again, I didn't talk about everyone because, you know, for once, we had only a few public comments. And I don't need to myself now make this board meeting where you still only get to go home at nine-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that it truly is a highlight to, that's what Dr. Schickel said. It's watching you all work as a team. And with the board of supervisors in the county working as a team, this is, this is a good example of government working like it's supposed to for the people of the community. And it's good to be part of this community. And like I say, it's just a highlight to see it all working like it's supposed to. Next, we move into information items, the first item on that list of the agenda. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I just jumped over the action items. We need to approve minutes. And we have a copy of the minutes for the August third, two thousand and twenty regular meeting. May I have a motion to approve, please? Thank you, Ms. Lora. May I have a second?
Second.
Thinking agreed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please pass your vote. Five aye. Next, we need to approve the bills to be paid.
In the materials, you have the July mileage and e-voices. And I recommend approval of the July bills as presented.
Do you have a recommendation by the superintendent and a motion?
I need to approve the bills as presented by Dr. Schickel.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden. The move is seconded. Is there any discussion of bills as presented? Is anyone have a question? Hearing none, please pass your vote. It's five aye. Now, for information items. The SEC has instructional plans for re-opening schools. Mr. Schickel.
Chair, Chair Falk, members of the board, Dr. Schickel. I shared with you our instructional plan for ELB schools. You should have an opportunity to have looked at that. I want to take a few minutes this evening to kind of give you an overview of that plan and provide you an opportunity to ask questions and maybe get some clarification. We were provided a framework for submitting our plan by the Virginia Department of Education. And there were four areas that we needed to address. One, one part was operational infrastructure to support learning, new instruction for all students, identification of instructional gaps and students' needs, and remote learning. And we were required to submit that plan to DOE fifteen working days prior to the start of school. So we have submitted it. We did receive some feedback that at this time, they had no further questions for us, and the plan seems to meet their requirements, although there really wasn't an official approval. So I just want to quickly walk through these four parts with you this evening, starting with the operational infrastructure. So one of the things that you're well aware of was revisions to our school calendar that we made starting September tenth. And we did that primarily for two reasons. One, give us an opportunity to kind of look at the data regarding, you know, the COVID-nineteen cases in our area after the county fair and after our local colleges and universities return back to our community. And also additional time for teachers to collaborate and plan. And I will elaborate on what that is looking like when we get a little further into this presentation. We also, as part of this infrastructure change, moved from what would be an eight-period day, an odd-even schedule, where students would have four classes on an odd day, one, three, five, seven; four classes on an even day, two, four, six, eight, for the entire year. Now we've moved to a four-by-four. So they have four classes first semester and four classes, brand-new classes, second semester. And these classes meet every day. And that's a shift for us, but we felt like if we have to go to a totally remote, virtual learning environment, which we're doing for the high school kids, that concentrating on four classes would be better for them than concentrating on eight and trying to keep up with eight classes. We also just very quickly put together for our initial opening that we're getting ready to experience September tenth. For elementary schools, there will be identified students who will be coming to school in person. Students with special learning needs, maybe EL students, students without access to internet. And we'll talk about that as well. Pre-K, K-1 students will be coming to school four days per week. And then there'll be distance learning then for second grade through twelfth. And that's what's going to be taking place as we initially open. And then as we think about a phase reopening, potentially having second through fifth graders come in on an A-V schedule, so students that were in the A group would come on Monday and Thursday, and students on the B group would come on Tuesday and Friday. And again, we'll have to look at how the data's trending as far as the spread of the COVID-nineteen and where we are and how comfortable we feel in bringing more students into the schoolhouse. And that was, that schedule was built so that we could maintain social distancing so that we can, again, be safe with our students and our teachers in that environment. In regards to technology, I think, you know, thanks to the school board and your visionary efforts in years past and the board of supervisors, we're in a really good spot with that. There's some school divisions who are scrambling now to go get the technology. And really and truly, for the most part, we haven't. Our students in grades four through twelve all will have access to Chromebooks. Grades two and three will have iPads. And we'll be using Zoom for virtual meetings. So the public comment tonight was well-taken. And I want to say that we already are working on plans. It wouldn't be a snow day, or we wouldn't chalk that up as a day gone by. We have ways that we can work around that, more asynchronous learning on those days, using Schoology and email to communicate with kids, using Seesaw at the elementary level. And we'll draft something, maybe with more specific details of how teachers, students, and families can work through that. But yeah, that was definitely give you a little bit of heartburn this morning when you realize Zoom wasn't working. And you've got to have a backup plan, right? That's just how it has to be. And we're also leveraging numerous online digital resources. And in that sheet that you have, you can click on the link, they're all there. I might want to go through all those with you. But I do want to say thanks again to the board of supervisors helping us out because we're able to buy some resources that we may not would have needed if students were in the building every day, right? Maybe some subscriptions to some resources that now we have to have because we can't share some of the books and different things. So that's been really a benefit. We've already purchased nine hundred hotspots and plan to purchase four hundred more. So providing that resource to families. Now, again, you're very familiar with Rockingham County. We're surrounded by mountains, mountains in the middle. And there's some places that you just can't get really good service with the hotspots. So we're working with those families, trying to get those students into our buildings. Mr. E Step has done a great job, you know, transportation, because that's, you know, not every, you know, a lot of those kids in the same areas or whatever, trying to get them in and make that work. Communication is, you know, is part of our plan. You know, Dr. David Birchfield has done a great job keeping our website up to date. We have a FAQ page in a place, a spot where parents and community members can ask questions. We've been using Power School Messenger for sending text messages and emails to our families. And live stream of school board meetings, right? And this is part of making sure the message is out there and that we're communicating with families and providing them an opportunity to submit public comments via Google. So I think, you know, trying to make sure we're doing the best we can with communication. Part two, instruction of, new instruction for all students. So in the spring, I think what we experienced was almost seventy percent of the school year was complete. And we felt like it was more of a review, not much as-- And we felt like it was more of a review, not much as, not as great a focus on new content. But now we know that we've got to be teaching new material to students, new content. So I'm going to kind of go through some schedules just to highlight some things for you, for your understanding. And this is on our website, the schedules, we have a pre-K, K-1 schedule, a two-three schedule, a four-five schedule. And then we have a middle school schedule and a high school schedule. And all of these reflect the requirements of DOE in terms of instructional time per day. And they, when I say they, the DOE doesn't distinguish between synchronous live instruction or asynchronous, the recorded lesson or what have you. So, so in the charts, there's a lot of blue area. And those activities can be done anytime, right? When it's convenient for the student and the family. And we have a schedule of, you know, times that are suggested, but as you know, we all work at our own pace. And it may take one student a half an hour to read the chapter, another student an hour. So there are just some guidelines that we're trying to work with. And then you also notice in the afternoons, there are times set aside for tutoring, conferencing, small group instructions with the teacher. And they'll be collaborating and planning that with the families based on the needs of the students and the age of the students, it may change. When you see distance learning on that chart, we're talking about opportunities for students to learn away from the teacher, maybe practicing something that was already instructed, maybe work on a project. We do plan at the elementary level to provide guidance, PE, art, music. And those will be different activities, maybe for PE, some choice boards for kids to pick what they would like to do. And then Wednesdays across the division will be distance learning for all students. And again, part of the DOE requirement is for students to be physically active. So we built that into the schedule, so you'll see it on there, break and move it. We want kids to be moving around and not just sitting in front of a computer screen for, for six hours. So when you look at this, this is a pre-K, K-1 schedule. If you, you see that eight o'clock to three o'clock, you go, wow, that's a full day, that's a lot, I don't know if I signed up for that. Well, the beige or tan, whatever color that is there in the middle, those, that, that really is the time of what would be direct live instruction via Zoom. If Zoom's not working, we may have to do some asynchronous activities there. And then we plan to either record or provide whatever instruction was given during that time to families if they need to do it at a later date, right? Or a later time, because we understand some families are working and they may not be able to do something, you know, just like that. Very similar here is this, this second and third grade. You see, looks like a full day from eight to three fifteen, but a lot of dark blue and that light blue or baby blue area. I'm not going to say Carolina blue because that doesn't feel right. But that would be the time that would be more direct instruction for the students that we would hopefully record. And then here is a fourth and fifth grade. And again, there's differences because of the amount of time that DOE has suggested we put in the day. So fourth and fifth grade's two and a half hours of instruction, second and third is two hours. And then middle school, the areas in lime green there, actual, again, the four blocks, students will be participating in. They have four classes on the four-by-four. And there, there's opportunities for distance learning to occur outside of the instructional time, right? So it's not just the time they're with their teacher, there's also additional time that students will have to commit to, to learning the content area at the middle school. And the same is true with the high school. So that's just kind of a quick overview, and again, we have opportunities in there for physical activity and wellness. Yeah, it says three to three forty-five, but if a student has, you know, baseball practice that evening or aerobics or swimming from six to seven, then that's their physical activity. But the, the main idea is we want kids to be physically active during this process. So I spoke about this a little bit earlier and just kind of revisit it very quickly. We basically offer to our families two options for instruction as we open this school year. One was a blended model with students coming to school A-days and B-days, right? And we're going to try to divide them as best we could, A to K, L to Z, and offering pre-K, K in first grade to come to school four days a week. And then Wednesdays, students would not be attending school, we want to use that time for some deep, deep cleanings, some teacher collaboration, planning, those types of things. And understanding that students would only be attending school in this blended model, A, two days a week, or B, two days a week. They would have to do work the three other days they weren't in school. And that would all be asynchronous distance learning activities planned, you know, for, for them by their teachers. And obviously, you are very aware that we're now in a virtual opening school, fully virtual, except for pre-K, K, and one. So that's been a little bit of a shift, but all along, our plan has been so spilt such that we could pivot and go from one phase to another. And then the other piece was a home learning academy. So we, families who felt very uncomfortable sending their students into a blended classroom, we decided we would try to offer a home learning academy where one of our teachers would be placed and charged. I think we have over a thousand elementary students signed up for that at this time. Forty or forty-one teachers assigned to those students. And teachers will be checking in with them, they will be using the same schedules that you saw earlier, right? So they're, they're going to be kind of following sort of the same procedures with that. And again, trying to build flexibility, recording the lessons that we're doing live or making an effort to provide that instruction in another format so families can work around that. And again, students are expected to do work outside of the time they're with the teacher. And then we're providing a digital device for students and other instructional resources. So if they need a writing book for first grade, handwriting book or textbook, we'll, we'll have the students go to, you know, arrange a time for them to go to their home school to pick up those materials. So we're offering this as well. Aaron Branner, Assistant Principal at John C. Myers, has been helping me with this. And Dr. Alderfer and Michelle Judd helping with the, getting the teachers arranged and get in place. And it's been a little bit of a moving target, that number changes almost from day to day. And we've never done this before. But I, but I think come September tenth, we're going to be ready and we are planning to offer a high-quality education to these students. And we want to keep them part of the Rockingham County family, and we want them to still be connected to their school. Because the hope is they'll eventually come back, whether that's, you know, January or next year, whenever, right? I don't, I don't have the last fall to say how this thing's going to work out, but. And then, just to keep moving on here, I don't want to take up all the time here. Grading, one of the things we did in the spring is grading was all extra credit. Elementary school, we didn't even collect the work, okay? It was just you do it and it's good practice for you. Things will be graded, we'll be collecting, students will be submitting work, we'll be grading, giving them feedback, which is what, that's what kids need to, to learn, right? They need feedback. And then at the, at the secondary level, moving to a semester grade, which is very similar to the college or university. So not trying to average the first nine weeks and the second nine weeks, right? Because a little bit fearful that kids in the first nine weeks may not do so hot, right? They're getting used to all this online learning, asynchronous. And if you don't do so hot first nine weeks and you come out the second nine weeks and you're smoking hot, your average is still not good, right? And so we wanted to rethink that. And again, still providing interim reports and those types of things to families so they know how the student's progressing. But that, that was a little bit of a shift in, in thinking about what can we do to help, help our students be successful in this different environment. Specials and electives will be offered, as I said earlier, at the elementary level. We are going to really try to keep the students in their space. The CDC guidelines suggest that you limit the transition time of students as much as you can. So we're going to try to keep them in their space and bring some of the specials into their classrooms. And then at the secondary level, we're offering electives to students as if they're in the building. Maybe some of the more hands-on electives could be offered in the spring, but we're trying to work around that as best we can. But they're being offered, we're not, we're not cutting them out, they're still part of our curriculum. Identifying the needs of, of students. Special education services will, you know, be determined through the IUP process. And that's a great structure to have in place to determine if a student needs to be in school for the four days, part of that identified group, or if they're sufficient, if they're just at home and getting support from their special ed teachers. Scott Hand's worked really hard with his crew to get testing protocols developed so that we can continue our eligibility process, so it doesn't have to stop. And then also accommodations that are provided to students through the five oh four. We'll still meet those accommodations in the virtual world. For students who are English learners, again, we're going to ask the schools to work with the principals, assistant principals, EL teachers to determine their students' needs and which ones would benefit from coming to school. And also recognizing those limits and how many we can bring in for social distancing reasons and so forth. But trying to give a priority to Level One and Level Two students. So that would be like intensive English, like folks who are just starting to learn the language. Economically disadvantaged, if students that we realize are economically disadvantaged free or reduced lunch, and we know they're struggling, there's some gaps. Working with schools to identify some of those kids to bring in, whether it's an afternoon or a day. And then also we'll be offering services to our gifted students. And our challenge teachers have really been thinking outside the box as to what they're going to do at the secondary level. They're going to be creating special units of study and students from around the, the division can participate in these unique learning opportunities in the afternoon hours. And so, again, it's just an opportunity to think outside the box of what, what we normally do. And then young learners, we know that literacy is, is important to, and, and to be in a space with a teacher to learn the phonological awareness and to develop those skills. So we really think it's important to get the pre-K, K, and one in. And we'll be going that four days a week for those families who are willing to do it. Again, we've got to socially distance those kids, wear masks, so forth, and keep them safe. But I think this is the right decision for, for their learning needs, for sure. PD for teachers, just quick highlights. So on the nineteenth, the directors and coordinators, supervisors from the division, they met with all the teachers for half a day. Talked to them a little bit about narrowing the curriculum, right? Typically, you see students for ninety minutes every other day, now you're seeing them for forty-five minutes every other day. So we've got to really think about what we're going to teach and be very efficient in how we do business. And also talk with them a little bit about some resources and trying to build some continuity with lesson planning. And then teachers spent a couple of days, they put them on teams across the division. So the third grade teachers across the division worked on English, language, arts, some worked on math, social studies, science, the whole gamut. And I'll show you that page just in a second. But building these lessons, these units, and then today was dedicated to having colleagues look at each other's work and give them some feedback, right? And saying, hey, here's what we could do to maybe make this better. And then tomorrow and Wednesday, they'll be meeting again in small groups to kind of look at their progress and see where they're going and where they need to go. They'll spend a couple of more days editing, trying to get things a little more polished. And then they'll spend two days, again, not two full days, but they've got a lot of different groups to meet with, working with them how to teach in a, in a virtual world. And giving them modeling for them what that looks like, what's, what's an asynchronous lesson look like, what's a, what's a synchronous lesson look like. And then there will be five days at the end towards, right before school starts, for schools to do some things that are school-specific. And also opportunities for maybe some back-to-school events and those types of things. And so, Kevin, if you wouldn't mind clicking on the Rockingham Collaborations, here's what we're working towards, just so you see. So sometimes it's nice to see the, what, what the end product would be like. And so, we haven't come up with a title yet, so if on your way home this evening you come up with a real catchy title, you be sure to email me or call me because we've got to get a good catchy title for that. So if, so, so this, this is the landing page. So Kevin, if you would please click on elementary for me, I don't think I can do it from here. So here are all the, the content areas at the elementary level, and if you scroll down, you'll see them all, music, art, PE, challenge. They're all there by grade level, and when we finish, there'll be lessons and units put in all of those spaces for any teacher to use and have access to. And these will be lessons built by our teachers with our curriculum. So we feel really good about that, and it's going to take us a while to get there. But if people have been asking you, what are the teachers up to in Rockingham County schools, this is what we're up to. And I don't know if we're going to make that public to the real outside world, I mean, maybe we'll charge a fee or something, you know what I mean? Because that's, that's going to be robust lessons to do that, sure. There, there are going to be some really robust lessons there. Again, they're critiquing each other's work, providing feedback, get specific parameters. Thank you, Kevin. And we have the same for middle and high, okay? So that's quite an undertaking. And really someone like, you know, like Mr. Fitzgerald, who probably has about sixty or seventy different classes that he has to oversee through CTE, that gets very rigorous. But really excited about, about that piece and, and what we're trying to accomplish. So the days that the school board allotted for PD and collaboration, we're using them for those things, right? Probably I'm going in the wrong direction. Okay, thanks, Kevin. No, no, was that the end? Are you trying to tell me something? Kevin pulled up the last slide, I'm not sure what he's trying to say. Family engagement and communication. So as I mentioned earlier, those five days prior to school, we want to provide opportunities for students who are new to a school, whether that be pre-K or kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth grade, new to the division, an opportunity to get into the school. The traditional back-to-school night's not going to work. Can't just say everybody come from six to eight because we're going to have a problem, right? People are going to take pictures of us and put it on Facebook and say they're not social distancing. So what we're going to do is spread this out over several days and, and get schedules and give kids an opportunity to come in, meet a teacher, get familiar with the school. And we also plan to continue with our local institutes of higher education to work with faculty and students and student teachers. And I do know, working pretty closely with JMU, they are becoming a very, they're very strict in the requirements for their students and the expectations. So we feel confident in allowing them to continue to work with us. Identification of instructional gaps. We will be using formative assessments, things like the PALS, the DKRP, to help in some of those ways for the elementary kids. The teachers across the board will be using assessments, some that we created, that we have locally, some that teachers will create just to determine where our students are before they start with their instruction. Probably wouldn't do that the first day, that's not a real good community builder, right? But at some point, we need to get an assessment of where they are. Counseling and mental health practices, we'll still continue to follow our protocols. And all staff will be receiving training. And again, I want to say kudos to Becky O'Schiflett and I think Scott Hand. They, this was a DOE requirement, so it came out, we have to provide mental health wellness training for our teachers to work with students. So we simply could have just checked the box, you know, had them read a paragraph or watch a three-minute video and say, good luck. Becky and some counselors worked hours putting together a phenomenal presentation. And it's not just about how to help students be mentally well, but also faculty and staff. So it's geared for everyone. So we're trying to, Becky's making an effort to get training for bus drivers, food service workers, custodians, everyone to be trained. So I'm really excited about the work that, that her team put together, making that happen. And again, it's, it's, it's good stuff, I think Dr. Schike has a little skill in there as well. The pacing guide, revisions to curriculum and pacing guide, we did work a couple of days on August with Eric Carvall from JMU. We had started some work with him in the spring to really think about narrowing our curriculum and talking about what's most important that we construct, right? What's, what's the most essential things? So we kind of picked that work up in August and, and it's not finished yet, it's a work in progress, but we've gotten it started. We've identified the big ideas and understandings for each content area. So that helps us as we're trying to determine what maybe we could put to the side and what really needs to be elevated. And then also, we were using, using the five E's model for lesson planning. It's a, it's a research-based lesson plan model for virtual teaching. It, it had five parts, all of them start with the letter E, as you probably imagine, since it says five E's. And again, trying to use a common template so kids kind of get some consistency as what's coming to them, right? You know, engage is like one of the first ones, right? And then explore, and then explain, and elaborate, and evaluate. So kids kind of get used to that format and families do as well. So trying to build some consistency there without stripping people of all of their autonomy. And then the last piece is remote learning. And again, as I And again, as I mentioned earlier, we built our plan to be flexible for families. We didn't want to pigeonhole people and say, no, you always have to be at the computer at 8:30 or whatever time. We understand we have families who are working, we have high school students who are working maybe to support a family, maybe providing childcare for, you know, their siblings or their neighbors, right? So we have to be mindful of those things. We also wanted to make sure that students were getting feedback, just not just doing work and checking out boxes, but actually getting feedback on how they're doing, making sure that teachers would have office hours for students to contact them before school. There's morning hours, there's afternoon hours. And then opportunities for synchronous learning. I think at the elementary level, that's going to be important, that we still have that morning meeting for 10 minutes for those who can participate. And then using Zoom, we didn't do that in the spring. At that time, we were a little concerned about some security features that now Zoom and Google Meet have been addressing and taking care of us. Now, whether or not it works on September the 10th, I don't know, we'll find out. But if it doesn't, we will have a backup plan for certain, again, using some of the tools and resources that we have in place. All right, so that's the end. There it is. So what questions do you have for me? So for those in the World Wide Web, he said there'd be some face-to-face interactions and also some virtuals, is what I heard there. Okay?
And then, do you have an idea of maybe how we should use virtual Virginia for the pretty much most of the content to be offered?
We, I know one. My son's going to take one course. We do, I don't know the exact number, and I can find out and let you know. We are getting students enrolled in courses in Virtual Virginia that fits their schedule. So for example, I said to my son, he's taking microeconomics, we don't offer that in Rocky Hill County, so he's able to take that through Virtual Virginia. And we're also leveraging their resources. So Virtual Virginia made all of their content free to the school division, so we also have that content at our disposal as well. But you're talking about a student taking a course with Virtual Virginia and they're the teacher, correct? That's your question. I don't have the exact number, but I will get that for you. But we are definitely leveraging that resource. And Virtual Virginia has actually expanded their seats because the demand was so great across the Commonwealth.
Because I know that in Virginia, you're talking about blended, and I'm sure you're going to be able to have our courses and technology.
Thank you, Erica. You're doing great work.
I just want to commend Dr. Schiflett for the work that he's done with his team because if you remember, last year, our big focus was on brain research, on cognitive science. And when he talked about understanding by design, I know, you know, you had attended a conference in Maryland about that topic years ago. And the Understanding by Design book that he's using is actually a combination of the two fields. It's Understanding by Design meets neuroscience. So it's exactly going down that same path that we talked about last year. So again, even during the pandemic, he's trying to fit, you know, what we do in terms of needing a new model into the same thinking that we had last year in terms of making sure it aligns with what we know about how the brain learns. And so, that just adds another layer to what they have to accomplish in all those teams. But it's just amazing to watch every day, you know, when the meetings happen and the conversations that take place. So thank you, Dr. Schiflett.
Chairman Fulk, members of the board, Dr. Schike. This evening, I would like to introduce you to the Health Plan Phase Three for reopening schools. This plan is posted on our website and was also submitted to the Virginia Department of Education. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the process, and then I'll highlight the plan by going over the summary. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the plan in detail, and I can answer any questions you would have at the end of my presentation. Starting in late June, we developed the Health and Safety Committee to work on the Health Plan for reopening schools. This committee had representation from elementary and secondary level, special ed, nurses, food service, maintenance, transportation. We met many times, at least 10, I'm sure, to develop the plan. We broke into two subgroups for some meetings, one focusing on the cleaning and the other on health issues so we could be more efficient. The plan is broken into seven subcategories. The first was called Preventing the Spread. That talks about our mitigation strategies of where we'll wear face masks, good hygiene, the cleaning that will occur in the buildings, social distancing, and limiting visitors to the building. The buildings will be disinfected daily and sanitized throughout the day. The second and third parts of our Health Plan are titled Managing Employee or Student Health. We will require self-assessments before coming to work or to school, and we provide a tool for parents to use for that. If you're feeling sick, you should not come to school or to work. And we have strict protocols in place about how and when you can return to work if feeling ill. The fourth section is about our playgrounds and recesses. Our playground structures will be closed during Phase Three. Social distancing on the playgrounds during recess must be 10 feet, and no masks are required while they are running and playing. And there is no sharing of any type of play equipment unless we can be guaranteed that it's disinfected before other children would use it. Our fifth section is about transportation and our maintenance mitigation protocols. Face coverings will be required to be on the bus to ride the bus. Students will only sit one child per seat. And all buses will be disinfected once a day at the end of the day. They will also be sanitized between runs if they carry a different set of students during the day. If they do not carry a different set of students, because students will have assigned seats, they will be disinfected at the end of the day. The sixth section is our food service protocols, and each school is approaching that a bit different depending on the circumstances of their building. Some buildings have had to use their cafeterias for classroom space, others haven't. So Jerry has, Mr. Lehman has worked with each school principal for what works best in their personal situation. We will also have meals to go for students that want lunch on days that they don't attend school, or even our virtual kids can come to the building to pick up lunch. The final section is closing of our school or division if necessary. We did not develop a plan that says if this, then that. And the reason that we didn't have a plan for that is because it's a very complex situation, and every situation is very different. However, we will be looking at all the data that is available to us at the time. We'll be consulting with the local Department of Health to determine what is the best course of action for the safety of all of our students and staff. I've also been busy purchasing supplies to get the division ready for welcoming students and staff back into the building. As you heard, mentioned actually numerous times this evening, the County of Rocky Hill received federal cares funding to help with COVID expenses, and they graciously shared some of those funds with the school system. As you might be aware, some PD and supplies are very hard to come by, but we have managed to have all necessary items delivered and ready for school to start on September 10th. Most likely, we'll be reordering some items so that we can have more available for later, but some items we've known we actually received a certain amount like that from vendors. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about the plan, who had the chance to read it in detail. If you haven't, you're welcome to also call me sometime if you have questions about that plan.
To board members, I've received some text messages from staff that members of the public have trouble hearing board members speak in the live stream. So if you could be as close to them like and speak directly into it, that will help the public hear what the questions are.
I've had a couple of people approach me, and I heard you say it, but I want to hear it again. How are we on cleaning supplies? Will teachers have enough supplies for their classrooms to be sanitized daily?
Yes, we have already at the school bottles of sanitizer, and I'm not sure if all have been received, or all the bottles received in now? Okay, they're still coming, they'll be in by the start of school. Any teacher that wants a bottle, they will be offered a bottle of sanitizer, and they're each given two rags, one that they can use, one that can be laundered. It's up to them how often they would like them to be laundered. Part of that might have to do with how often they're used, and whether they're in a classroom with students or if they're just in their classroom by themselves during the day and all they want to, you know, just think they should like the food things or whatever, but yes.
By rags, you mean?
Pardon me?
You said rags, two rags.
I said rags.
Yeah, so can you explain that? Well, what they're, like, what they are made of?
Micro, oh, yes, okay. They are actually being supplied microfiber rags. And the reason that is the case, they're all new, if we've been purchased for the buildings, transportation, and food service, is what I learned is that a microfiber rag on its own, without any type of cleaner, will remove 99% of all germs on the surface, even without disinfectant or sanitizer. So when you combine that with the sanitizer, we think we're getting those things.
I've learned a lot about cleaning supplies that I never knew.
Other question, board members? I just am curious because I have grandchildren who are elementary age and on the playground in recess, what type of physical activity will be available for them?
For them? Well, I kind of asked that question in our meeting also as to what we would be doing. And the elementary principal said a lot of red light, green light, and mother may I. That was the response that I got as a way of them having something to kind of do together but be able to stay separate.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah, I would also point out again, Cheryl's life since March 13th wasn't what she expected it to be. And the public oftentimes, you know, it's Wednesday, the plan coming, you know, why is this not finalized? And I will just make one point, at 8:58 a.m. this morning, Dr. Laura Corningate, who is the regional PDH director, had sent us an email. Here is updated CDC guidance for schools. So even today, you know, there's new guidance out from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, changing some of their approaches, you know, where new research points in a different direction. And so it's an ongoing process, and every day, you know, she came with a report and then it's like, well, but now we learn, for example, the neck gaiters and what the impact of those may be when you wear those instead of a cloth mask. And so, a constant adjustment. And she's been just tremendous, you know, working through that with her team again, and everyone else here too. You know, Alvin has to transport kids differently, and, you know, Steve and Jerry, they've all just, again, taken those steps to make sure that kids can come back as soon as it's safe. So thank you, Cheryl.
Financial review?
So the financial review is the new materials for your review. So this is the update on expenses and, you know, the percentage, the percentages that have taken place.
Now we move to other business, school board questions. Let the board members read.
Thank you, Mr. Fulk. A couple things. Ms. Woodburn, thank you for letting us be here. And I wonder, board members, in the interest of Mr. Fulk insanity, if we maybe want to continue at least through the end of October, code due to Rocky Hill Academy, if Ms. Woodburn will let us stay and continue to initiate her. But I would certainly propose that we do that at least through the end of October, release some of that from other schools. Obviously, we continue to work very hard to get the technology together for those members of the public that want to watch all virtually. And so, I think it would if us to be able to do that, staying in one place and continuing to use the technology that we have here in the largest school in figured out here, would be a really good idea. That's my conclusion. I don't know if we need to do anything, if we need to vote on that, or I don't think we need to vote. I think it's a good idea.
Well, I don't think it's necessary. I think we did.
Consensus.
No consensus, if we would.
Legal counsel has advised us in the past that if a significant vote is on the agenda and we change the location short-term, then that requires a vote just because of the importance of that particular item. But since we have not yet put together the agenda through October, so we don't have that issue, so that's certainly something we can simply change in the calendar.
And then I think we can just revisit by the last meeting in September, whether we want to continue with the end of the year or if we couldn't.
Ms. Woodburn, do you have anything to say about?
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
There's only one meeting that I would maybe recommend that we have at the building, and so that's at the end of September because that's the day of the retiree dinner. And so, we're still, you know, working on the plans for that. And so, maybe for that one, we may be at the building. But again, we have still time between now and then to finalize that because, again, we're working through the protocols in terms of distancing and what that may look like at the end of the year. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
The other question I have for you, Dr. Schike, is, and maybe even Dr. Schiflett, if you answer this, have we thought at all about, I envision when we get into that first week of September, lots of people are going to have lots of questions about our lives and we don't want our staffs in our schools to be able to, like, hey, to have a teacher who's trying to work their way through lessons and also having 16 emails that range from a number of things such as one child didn't wear their mask, or this man cleaned. And so, have you thought a little bit about how we're going to troubleshoot? Is there going to be a phone tree? If you need to buy devices, parents have a question about this? about this, contact this person? Have we thought about that at all?
I would say it's important, you know, to have the topic addressed where the resolution can be applied. So I don't think, you know, central office staff would want to hear about 25 different issues at 25 different schools if the resolution then has to come at the building level anyway. But I think there is a lot of information that can be shared about questions that a number of parents have regarded of the school. For example, you know, about the face coverings, right? We hear that all the time now, you know, that people have questions about little kids wearing the face coverings, they're not going to be able to, it's going to be a disaster. What are you going to do if a child comes without the face covering? You know, they take it off, they say, "I refuse," whatever it may be. And so, of course, for that, there's a consistent approach across the division. And I think we can handle that through the FAQs, but also, you know, make it, you know, make it known through emails and text messages on the website, you know, what our approaches are. But as in the past, if the issue is very specific, for example, to one particular teacher's requirement for class, right, then we would want that to be addressed there. I think what's most important is that we let the community know, like you said, which types of questions should be asked away, so that we don't, you know, get this flood of questions at the central office level where we then have to go back to the school anyway, and say, "So what is it that you actually are doing there?" So I think that's a good opportunity, you know, to educate the community too. When you have a school division with 12,000 students and 2,500 staff members, that not, if they're all called Pam Bocock, you know, she probably has a good answer for everything, but that's not fair to her. And that can't be the single point, you know, of reference for everyone, but that there are issues that need to come directly to my office. But, you know, when it's at the classroom level, you know, deal with the classroom teacher. When it's at the school level, then, you know, we won't direct it to the school. But if it's consistent, you know, across the schools, then it's at the division level. And so I think we can educate the public to avoid, number one, multiple contacts. As you know, you may receive an email, and then the same person may email Jeff Falk or Mr. Breeden with the exact same question without including the others. And so all three of you are trying to get a resolution for a topic that really could be addressed once. And so I think that's a good approach, as you said, you know, educate the public where particular issues should be brought. And we can certainly also have, you know, again, the online forums where people can submit comments or questions, and it can be redirected. But I think that's a good education opportunity.
I mean, I think that, I think that's a good strategy. I mean, the potential is there for our teachers and our principals and our office staff to be, and our central office staff to be overwhelmed by the amount of questions. And I think that it's smart for our public to really step back when they have a question and say, "Is this something I need to know today? I need to know tomorrow. I need to know in the next week." Because I think the reality is that we're all trying our hardest to get the learning that our children need in the education, and we need to prioritize engagement with them. So I don't want that to be a distraction, but it looks like we're starting to really think about that a bit more.
And our community engagement coordinator, Dr. Birchfield, he and I meet weekly now to go over strategies, go over the topics that are pressing, and to talk about, you know, distribution of the information. And just because I mentioned face coverings, you know, for us, it's also important to talk to other school divisions. So Louisa County opened in a hybrid model last week, and teachers were particularly worried about, one, having about 30% of the kids in the building, but two, youngest children wearing face masks all day, because that's now become the standard across Virginia too, and really across the nation in many places. And the superintendent today in a regional meeting said that their experience so far has been that pre-K and kindergarten and first grade kids had no trouble whatsoever with the masks. In fact, he got calls from parents who said the kids came home and didn't want to take them off. So I don't know that that's going to be across the board the experience, but that's why I said we need to make that the goal, right? So if we say, "Yeah, when feasible," then they're going to be on half the time. If we say all the time, then that's where we want to be. And children are able to do it if they're also given the message everywhere that this is important, right? And so they're also, in terms of the 30%, they said, you know, teachers thought it is going to be really troubling, you know, when 30% of the students are in the building. And what the experience so far has been from teachers, he said, "A lot of teachers have now said it's empty, the buildings are empty," because we're not used to only having 30% occupancy, right? And so it's good that we, you know, I always said, when, as these other school divisions push deadlines back, I said, "You have to go, you know, a couple weeks before we do," so we can see what's actually going on. And in Louisa County, they've had, again, the same issues in terms of community spread, and then trying to keep the school division safe. And so far, so good. It's only been, you know, a few days, obviously, but families and students have really responded there, and it's, you know, are doing well in terms of, you know, distancing and also face coverings. So we're learning a lot every day, even from other places. And I guess the county's going to grow at some point, and we learn every day.
And I think my final comment is, about six years ago, I was reminded every weekend because of discussing of Surat Khan Robinson, and I think Mr. Falk and Mr. Breeden will remember, about six years ago, we went to a conference in New Orleans and heard Surat Khan's speech about creativity in the classroom and school. And it really was the seed of the direction that Rockingham County has been headed in since then. And Dr. Shiffler brought up about technology, and that we had the foresight to build that infrastructure when we did, wasn't always a popular decision for us to have made. So we made the decision that it's made, put us in a better place than we are. And our leaders continue to move us forward, even in these difficult times, and we entrust that to them. They've done that with integrity, they've done that with honesty, and we continue to move forward with creativity, just as we wanted to six years ago. So thank you, Dr. Shiffler, to you and your staff, for your continued progress.
Thank you, McCreed. I hadn't heard that, you know, the group job, that go off.
Thank you. I just want to point out to the internet world that many of the folks that are behind this plan and are working hard are in the room right now, and I want to thank each and every one of you. And I want to ask, like I was asked several times at the fair, "How are you doing? Are you all okay?" I hope so, and I hope you take some time. I'm getting thumbs up, so that's good. And I think I can see some smiling behind those masks. But do take some time for your own mental health, because this is hard. This is not what we want. But this is what we've got to do, and we're going to do it. And for the parents out there, please understand, many of us in the room are also parents of students in Rockingham County schools, and this is not what we want. But this is what we're going to do. And in my family, we have a say. We're going to fake it till we make it, and we're going to get there. We're going to all work together, and we're going to learn new exciting things, just like Ms. Mast has learned about cleaning products that she never wanted to learn about. But look at all the great things you know about cleaning products now. So we'll get there. It'll be an adventurous year for our students. And thank you to each and every one of you that's been working so hard.
Dr. McQuicken.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. I'd like to echo the sentiments by Laura. We do very much appreciate everything that you're doing. We want our parents and our community to work with us, so that we're all providing the very best education that we can for our students now, during the pandemic, and in the future.
Thank you, Dr. McQuicken. Mr. Breeden.
Thank you. If it pleased the chair, I'd like to stand to address my colleagues. I rise this evening, in part for effect, to address something that in my wildest dreams I never thought I would have to address in our beloved Rockingham County. A few meetings ago, Dr. Scheichel graciously accepted the role as lightning rod for criticism for decisions that are made by this board. And I think that we all, as board members, accept that responsibility. We all accept that we are going to receive criticism. We welcome it. We welcome respectful, constructive criticism and challenge. But it has been brought to my attention recently, particularly on social media, that some comments have been made about our superintendent, which I consider to be grossly out of line. Suggestions that, to quote, "He is not one of us," to associate his birthplace with the birthplace of infamous World War II leaders. Rockingham County, we're better than that. And I'm ashamed that those comments have been made in our beloved Rockingham County. And Dr. Scheichel, on behalf of what I believe be the vast majority of the good citizens of Rockingham County, we apologize. Dr. Scheichel has been a devoted member of Rockingham County Public School staff for over 25 years, as a teacher, as a coach, as a central office staff member, and now as superintendent. He has two wonderful and successful daughters that are products of Rockingham County Public Schools. He stands with us each and every meeting and pledges allegiance to that flag. So I call upon the good citizens of Rockingham County, when you hear this kind of talk, don't be silent. Call it what it is, and that is inappropriate and with no place in the discussion about the education of our children in Rockingham County. In closing, Dr. Scheichel, I think I can speak for the entire board in saying tonight that you have our respect and our full-fledged support.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate every word he said. And as you know, we always talk about how this is one big team, and again, it's evident tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Board members, we now have the need to enter into closed meeting. Do you all have a motion towards that?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider in the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, and employees, for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation, and A2, one or more particular student specifically related to requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, McCreed. The chair will second that motion. Any discussions, board members? Here in nine, please cast your votes. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed session. Thank you for your standing this evening.